Good evening, Canby. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for February 5th, 2025. Most of us are here. We have our city attorney on Zoom this evening. Hello, how are you? Both Councilor Maldonado and Councilor Hensley, who I thought was going to be zooming in, are not here this evening. They have work engagements. So we will start with the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. And just for the invocation tonight, please, I'd just like for you to bow your heads during a moment of silence. The city last week, our parks lead, parks manager passed away from cancer. And so I just want to take a moment of silence for him and his family right now. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah, so Jeff Schneider, if you knew Jeff, passed away after a very long, hard-fought battle with cancer. And so just please keep his family and your thoughts and prayers here in the next weeks and months on that. It's a major loss too. Obviously, the family, but he was incredible team member and employee here at the city. And we miss him very much. So we will move into, I don't believe we have any new employee introductions, or do we? Emily, we do not. Okay, we will move into citizen input and community announcements. So there's an opportunity for audience members to address the council on non-agenda items. If you are wishing to address the council and you are here, please fill out one of these yellow cards that are back there on the podium and bring it over to our city recorder and she'll make sure that I get it and that we give you your three minutes of time with the council. If you are not able to make it in but want to do it online, please reach out to our city recorder by 4:30 on the day of our city council meetings and she'll make sure that you get the link and are queued up to do so. Right now, I have a yellow card from Tamara Driver about the Canby Beautification. Tamara, if you want to come to the table there and tell us what's on your mind tonight.
So, good evening. Is that close enough for this?
Yep, you're good.
Good evening. My name is Tamara. I've lived in Canby for over 20 years, and I happen to be reading one of the older Canby heralds. And I read about the Canby Beautification project perhaps being mowed down. It made me sad. So I don't often do this, but I said, and maybe there's something I could do. So I called Eileen at the city administrative office, and she called me back and said, hey, there's a meeting. You could come and catch a lot of the council people. So that's why I'm here. I am not part of the beautification folks that do all that. I am an active member of the Canby Garden Club. So I really believe in making our community lovely with natural things. And I have watched since they've planted those trees and roses and wildflowers since they started years ago. And I've always been touched and a little guilty that I haven't ever been out there to help them. But the fact that they've been doing it so long, and there's probably not many families that haven't seen volunteers out there working at some point. And that sense of community that I feel like that builds, there's kids out there sometimes, families spreading mulch. I think we need more of that in our communities, not less. I think that should be encouraged. And so I was so disheartened to hear in Mr. Baker's article that perhaps that's all going to be taken away. And I do understand that perhaps maybe some Ts weren't crossed and Is weren't dotted and some things were missed as far as communicating with either ODOT or the railroad tracks. But I'm wondering with any of your voices, is there a way to communicate with either of those groups to come to some type of agreement where there's, we're not just going to bulldoze everything with our own tax dollars? That would just make me so sad. So that's what I was thinking tonight and wanted to share with you all. So I know this is a lot of work that you guys do, and I'm not often here at the meetings. I do want to say thank you for that. So if you do have a voice that you can share with any of the people that work at ODOT and/or the railroad, if you could give a good word for those folks that have worked hard, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Ms. Driver, thank you for coming. And it has been a volley of emails and back and forth between city staff and with ODOT and the railroad. And unfortunately, it seems like maybe we missed a few Is and a few Ts in terms of dotting and crossing. And so
Sure. That happens.
It does. And I'm not sure, we're not totally sure how that occurred.
Right.
So I do know that the Canby Beautification Group is not, you know, they're still very much engaged and still very much want to try to do something. And I think what we had happen was ODOT said one thing, and things crossed boundaries into the UP Railroad. And they tend to be, what's the word I'm looking for? They tend to be very, they tend to be sticklers and very hard-nosed about their rights of way. And this is where something we think just crossed over into their right of way. And so I know that we will do our best to work with Canby Beautification to see what, and if there's more that we can do along those lines, if it's a replacement or doing some other things. So
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so we are trying to work with them through some of that stuff.
I understand that rules need to be followed, even by volunteer groups, absolutely. But the heavy-handedness of it is a bit galling, to be honest. So, thank you all.
No, thank you for coming and asking about it. Appreciate it very much.
Sure.
I don't have any other yellow cards. Might anyone dial in or want to tonight? No? Okay. I see the council president, Hensley, has joined us. Hello. Okay, we're going to move into a public hearing this evening. So we have a public hearing here for a noise, to consider a voice, a noise variance request from J.E. Dunn Construction for the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission for early morning concrete pours and the site work at 165 South Walnut Street from March 1st, 2025. And I'm supposing this is to March 28th, not February 28th?
I had it here. They wanted to have it for a full year, the max amount of time that we allow.
Sorry, I didn't, to March 2026.
2026.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, how have I read the full date? Okay, so before we roll into that, the matter presently before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matter. This public hearing was noticed, and those who wish to speak were instructed to contact the deputy city recorder. We did not receive any requests to speak at this time. Those people that are interested in testifying as either proponents or opponents, please indicate your desire to speak by raising your hands. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In so doing, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. All questions must be directed through the mayor. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. There will be a very brief staff report. Questions, if any, by the hearing body. I will then open the public hearing for testimony. Proponents and opponents will each be given three minutes to speak if they wish. I will then close the public hearing. If there are any additional questions by the hearing body, we'll hear them after I close the hearing. And then there'll be discussion by the hearing body. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the proceeding of the hearing? Okay, and I believe we have Mr. Potter, our planning manager, and then DJ Leonard here from J.E. Dunn. If you guys want to come to the table. Good evening.
Evening.
So Ryan, what kind of noise are they going to be making?
I'll let them speak to that. And normally, the planning department doesn't get involved in this part of the, or in noise variances in general. But I'm just really here to confirm that this is an approved project with an approved land use decision. It was approved in December and then reaffirmed in January with written findings. And then also, one of the conditions of approval of the project was to comply with our noise ordinance, including getting a variance if needed. So that's just some background from our department.
Okay. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Yeah, so the types of noise you're going to hear is going to be mainly mechanical type noises, trucks coming to site, we'll be running concrete pumps and then concrete trucks, obviously. And, you know, generally, just getting them onto site and backing them up is typically one of the loudest things you're going to hear. That's going to, you know, be any amount of noise that carries is going to be the backup alarms that you hear on the trucks. And yeah, other than that, you know, most of what we're doing is, you know, much lower decibel noise than that portion of it. And, you know, we tend to want to start our concrete pours early because, you know, they can be 14, 15, 16-hour days sometimes. And we obviously are going to run out of time on the back end as well. So it's usually best to start early, especially depending on what the weather is. Because, you know, if it's going to be a hot day or something, we got to take that into consideration for our concrete pours and whatnot, and laying down a lot of concrete there. So.
Okay. I guess the only question I have, I think I read probably starting around four, between four and seven o'clock in the morning, most days on that.
Yep.
Okay, and it's for the flooring and then the concrete tilt-up walls?
Yes, sir.
Land for, okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Anything else? Are your guys in? We should consider, we need to know? No, it's pretty pre-cut and dry noise variance. Any other questions from the council? Yes.
Have we had any input from the neighbors? There are some houses there. Have they been noticed?
Yeah, I know, and you maybe can speak to this. I know we sent out, I believe, some letters, and we also published something in the newspaper as well. So yeah, I think it's been well noted.
Yes, there was a radius notice done, but the planning department didn't receive any input. I'm not sure if Maya did.
We didn't receive any either.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Is the noise variance for the entire year for the 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. timeframe? So, yes. So we're giving ourselves a big window. We're still working through actual start date with the state and the OLCC right now. Our hope has been for several months now that we're going to start in the March timeframe. We're still waiting on some red tape to be cleared, permits mostly, to get us going. So that year timeframe, we're not going to be doing that portion of the work for the entire extent of a year. The concrete portion of it's going to be over a couple of months within that for the heavy concrete, for the floors and for the tilt panels. And then there will be some site concrete that's going to happen later on down the road. That's going to be the half-street improvements on, like, we have some on Walnut Street and also on First. So that concrete, though, isn't going to be as big and heavy as the stuff that we're doing for the big building. So I would say that the majority of what we're doing is going to be over the span of, you know, two, three months, say, while we're doing the tilts and the actual slab-on-grade.
Yes, Councilor Patton.
I move to grant a noise variance. Oh, wait, are we not allowed to do that? Oh, that's right, because it's a public hearing. Darn it!
Yes.
Shame on me.
Council president, thank you. I appreciate your eagerness. Council president, Hensley, did you have something?
Actually, Jim asked my question, but thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. We are open. Initially, didn't have any proponents or opponents. Do we now have any? Okay, then I will close our public hearing. The only discussion, I don't think we have any other questions. I will just say, discussion-wise, this is not any different than what Columbia Distribution had to do. I think they had somewhere around 250 cement trucks or more. I think it was the grand number. I don't know if you're having that many, but they did run a noise variance request as well and ran it for quite a long time. So to me, it's unfortunate part of the construction phase. And I appreciate that that was a condition. You guys have met that. So I appreciate that. Is there any other discussion points or comments? Yes.
Just a question. Since I was on the council, I think then when Columbia was being built, was there any complaints when that was happening, when they had the large noise?
No, much like, I think, what the, what's been done for this build, they did the same thing in terms of notice to the radius of houses that needed to be there. And so much more of that around there now is industrial land, that most of the businesses were not impacted by the noise from that, from the construction. Yes.
There was in the packet a list of different addresses where the information was sent to. Most of them were businesses or like trusts for various chunks of land. There was only a handful of actual, like, residences. Yeah.
Any other discussion items? Okay. I gladly
No, I'm not able to do it.
You are absolutely able to make a motion if you'd like to.
Fantastic. So I move to grant a noise variance to J.E. Dunn Construction of Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission for early morning, 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. concrete pours and site work at 165 South Walnut Street from 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. on March 1st, 2025, to February 28th, 2026, to occur as needed.
Motion has been made by Councilor Patton and seconded by Councilor Davis to approve the, where did I leave off? To grant the noise variance for J.E. Dunn for early morning concrete pours and the site work on 165 South Walnut Street from 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. March 1st of 2025 until February 28th, 2026, and to occur as needed. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes 5-0. DJ, thank you. Ryan, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Next on the agenda this evening is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that consists of the January 22nd, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes and the appointment of Jennifer Gillar to the Heritage and Landmarks Communication Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2027. And I apologize for the phone ringing.
I think there's a second one on there as well.
Oh, so the second page, I apologize. And the appointment of Heather French to the Heritage and Landmarks Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2026. Excellent.
Second. Motion has been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Councilor Patton to approve the consent agenda, which includes the January 22nd, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, appointment of Jennifer Gillar to the Heritage and Landmark Commission with a term ending June 30th of 2027, and then appointment of Heather French to the Heritage and Landmark Commission with a term ending June 30th of 2026. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes 5-0. Next on our agenda this evening is ordinances and resolutions. And it's to consider ordinance 1639, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Menghan Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,135,210 for the construction of the Public Works Fuel Card Lock Station Project, second reading. And this again, we, second reading being that we've done, so two weeks ago, I had the conversation about the construction of our fuel station and tanks out of the Public Works Department. And Jerry reminded us again, how far under budget are we on this?
We had a budget of $1,670,000, and it came in low bid was $1,135,000.
Okay, so, perfect. I appreciate you
Set 535.
Budgeting the larger, larger amount for us to
Finally getting to say that, that we came in under budget.
So are there any further questions about this project from the last meeting that came up? No, it's pretty much boilerplate review. Okay. It is a roll call vote, so I will turn it over to Maya to do so. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
We still need a first, so I'll make the motion, I suppose.
Thanks. I thought Jason would be the only one out of order tonight. I guess I am now, too.
I move to approve our ordinance number 1639, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Menghan and Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,135,210 for the construction of the Public Works Fuel Card Lock Station Project.
Second.
Paul, you take it.
I think that, Paul, is that your first second? All right. Motion is made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Councilor Waterman to approve ordinance 1639, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Menghan and Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,135,210 for the construction of the Public Works Fuel Card Lock Station Project, second reading, roll call vote.
Councilor Patton?
Hmm, yes.
Councilor, Councilor Davis?
Aye.
Councilor Sterns?
Yes.
Councilor Waterman?
Yes.
And Council President Hensley?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Next up, any old business? I don't think we have any. It's not listed here. But Ms. Eileen, do we have any old business?
Yeah, this, this might be a good time to, to tell the council what happened to ordinance 1640 that was tabled last week. So Emily, do you want to talk about ordinance 1640?
Sure, happy to. Can everyone hear me okay, first off?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so from last meeting's discussion, the decision was made to table that ordinance, which was a contract to extend the services that the city, particularly the police department, received from Mo Reader, I believe I'm saying that correctly. So staff went back and heard council's concerns about budgeting and what, after talking with another attorney in my office, staff came up with a plan to reduce the term of the contract to six months with a not-to-exceed price of $25,000. And what that does is, keeping it to six months allows for Todd to build that $25,000 into his existing budget. So he can, that can be absorbed by the existing budget for the remainder of this fiscal year. And it also keeps it below the $50,000 threshold amount that would require council to approve this via ordinance. And it also is a low enough figure that allows the city to award the contract directly without going through a competitive process. the contract directly without going through a competitive process. And then I believe the plan is, if after the six months, the city's at the point where it still requires the specialized IT services, we can reassess then, it can be built into, you know, chief's budget for the coming fiscal year or beyond that as needed.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily, appreciate that. Okay.
Okay.
Easy enough.
Good.
Streamline the process, so I appreciate that all around, thank you. Okay, new business, we have the release of the sewer easement letter for Southeast First.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Emma Porocolo, Associate Planner in the Planning Department. I am here tonight to discuss the request for council to approve the city administrator signing the request for the removal of their sewer easement at the property located at 1075 Southeast First Avenue. This is a parcel that is a portion of the Millars lot. The request came to us from the developer of the property because they are working on a food cart pod for that property, and that food cart pod has already received land use approval, and so we are following through the subsequent steps. And through that process, this easement is located in the area in which they proposed to build a portion of a structure you are not allowed to build in easements typically, so they requested for what the process would be to remove this easement. We were unsure when this request came in, so I worked closely with former city attorney David Doofman on this request, and his recommendations were to take this request to you all and that city council is the appropriate entity to sign off on, the city administrators sign off on the document. Both the applicant due diligence and I discussed with Public Works both indicate that the easement is no longer necessary, and so thus we see no hurdles to needing to remove the easement. And Eric Matthews, on behalf of M Architecture, who's working on the food cart pod, is also here tonight if you all have any questions for him as well.
Okay, great. Hi, Eric, thank you for being here. So totally not needed anymore, where Millars has a clear, if we approve this, clear go ahead to move forward?
Correct, yes, they already have the land use approval, and the sewer line has since been moved, for the sewer line that that easement existed for previously has, is no longer located in sewers, coming from, I believe, the north side of the site now.
Okay. Any questions for, on this matter? Any clarification needed? No? Okay. Yeah, this is, I know, a long time project that Millars has been working on, so it'll be great to, I've seen the, seen the plans, it'll be a really great piece to have there on 99, so, perfect.
And I can't discredit Brianna in our planning department, is actually the ones that helped them with their food cart pod application and took them through that approval process, so I'm just here for the easement section.
It's always a group effort when you talk about city planning, so, perfect, great. And so we need an actual motion here for this, or just a consensus piece to, no, or is it a, Emily, it's a full motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the city administrator signing the release of sewer easement letter terminating all city interest in the public sewer easement located along the rear property line at 1075 Southeast First Avenue, tax lot 31E, 34C, 00405.
Second. Motion has been made by Council Patton and seconded by Council Davis to approve the city administrator signing the release of sewer easement letter terminating all city interest in the public sewer easement located along the rear property line at 1075 Southeast First Avenue, and that's tax lot 31E, 34C, and 00405. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. That passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Item B, which is not here, it's, but it's a new business item, so potential, it's more of a question for the council to look at your calendars, we'd like to do a potential audit presentation and mid-year budget review on a Wednesday, the last Wednesday in February. It's an off-cycle meeting for us, but we want to get it in as the budget process is underway for city staff, and so if, we'd like to just get potentially a head nod of affirmation this evening so we can get that scheduled and move forward.
The 26th?
Yes, February the 26th.
Hmm, yeah.
I'm good.
I'm okay, Jeff. Is it six or seven?
I was going to ask, what time did you want to start and do you want the budget committee there as well?
Yes, the budget committee.
Definitely want the budget committee there, absolutely.
So if we can do a seven o'clock.
Seven, and the budget committee.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
That'll work for you, okay? So Eileen, it looks like we've got, Jason, are you in town, out of town?
I am here.
Okay.
It's going in the calendar under flamingo.
Flamingo?
Yeah, all my volunteer stuff is flamingo.
Oh, see, my city stuff is blue.
Okay, well, I appreciate you guys' calendar updates, it means a lot for the community. So we've got that scheduled for the 26th, so we'll move forward with that, okay? Great. Thank you, Eileen.
Some people might find this information fascinating. We put our pants on one leg at a time, just like most other people, except for people who like to just jump into their pants, which is, you know, could be.
All right, well, we're going to move into mayor's business. I don't have much to report on, just a couple of things, I want to thank the council and the department heads. Last Friday, we had the city council goal sitting session, and we got a lot done in, for a Friday evening, so thank you to the staff members that were here and to the council for getting after it. I know that the facilitator that we used already has sent back notes and whatnot, and I know that the piece then is now, the city manager and staff will go through and flesh out action items. One of the things that I've asked Eileen to work on is to take the pieces that we might need work sessions on and guess mash them in with outstanding work sessions that we were still, you know, needing to do from last year's goal setting. So we will work on a, on a hierarchy or a list of what those will look like, because I know that we've got some outstanding ones, and I know we've had some requests from like the park advisory board to do a work session with the council, so we will get those appropriately teed up over the, for the next couple of months and get that out to everybody. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Coming up, there is a couple of opportunities to hear the State of the City address. The first one will be at the Canby Rotary Lunch on February 21st. The second opportunity will be at the Chamber Luncheon on March 4th. Let's see, both of those are at 11:30. And then on March 11th, we will be doing one here at City Hall that will start at 6:00 clock. So if you're interested in coming down to City Hall, and we'll provide some cookies and treats for, for that, and so I'll gladly give that presentation and follow with a question and answer period for those that wish. So again, February 21st, Canby Rotary Club Luncheon, March 4th, the Canby Area Chamber of Commerce at 11:30, and then March 11th here at City Hall at 6:00 p.m. Crackus County Coordinating Committee I have tomorrow evening, so nothing to report on that. Monday evening, the regional, Region 1 Area Commission on Transportation, there was a lot of updates, there was a discussion on ODOT road transfers, the closest one to us would be Hall Boulevard through Tigerd, so they're Tigerd and the state of, so ODOT are working on getting funding secured and transferring a big chunk of Hall Boulevard over to the city of Tigerd to operate, maintain, and take care of, so it's, that is not something I think we as a council should consider for 99E. We'll let ODOT continue to take care of that. That's all that I have, and we'll start with Council Patton for council reports.
Hello there, everybody. So, real quick, I did attend, I've not attended the Planning Commission meeting, I think it was canceled, correct? And then, but I did go to the first Heritage and Landmarks Commission meeting. Carol Palmer was chosen to be the chair of that group, and she, of course, is very tenacious and is hit the ground running over there. She has Tyler Happen for keeping him quite busy, so that'll be good for him. And then we did have two, we did approve two new members tonight who were at the meeting, and then there was another individual there who was interested, so if they do put in an application, one of the things that I have, that I have been a victim of when it comes to these sort of things is the never-ending wait to get like an interview, to be put on one of these boards and stuff, and so I work really hard to make sure that that process is followed fast, and I think from the time Jennifer put in her request and then also Heather, I think we had the interview within a week, and now it's here for you. So if this individual puts their application in, I hope to hit something very similar, and then we will, as far as the citizen members of the commission will be full. And then Carol is in the process of finding somebody to fill that student position, she'll be working with a school on that. The other member, yes, get an ACP. The other thing I will just say is, and unfortunately, they have left, regarding the planting on 99E. I had done some work on that with some mulch and stuff, and several years ago, I worked, like last year, I had worked with Jerry and Canby Utility to see if there was a possibility of putting irrigation out there, so that way the plants that they planted out there survived. And I learned very quickly that the relationship that all of that had out there was very tenuous. ODOT was not, was not really pleased that we even asked about putting water out there, and they were vehemently against it because we were not allowed to have anything really in that area to begin with. In doing some research, it turns out like, I appreciate everybody's desire to want those plants to stay there, but it is pretty much a foregone conclusion. The railroad, the plants are in the railroad easement, which some of them are, which was never allowed to begin with. The approval to the permit to be able to even be doing all that is several years expired, and when, and I kind of had a fear when I drove down 99E and saw them, when the planter boxes were installed, that really fired Union Pacific up, and that was essentially, from what I understand, is the nail, the last nail in the coffin. So unfortunately, all of that will end up coming out, and there really isn't much the city can do other than let them deal with it. As far as I understand, the city is not going to be taking care of it. ODOT will be the ones to do all of that work with UP, and then that is that. So unfortunately, as someone who loves to make sure that Canby is as beautiful as possible and is a plant nerd, it is unfortunate, but I do recommend that people not poke the badger, which is the railroad, any further, and that is it for me.
Yep, thank you, sir. Council President Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to apologize for what appeared to be my tardiness, I was having technology issues. I heard you do the moment of silence for Jeff Snyder, and I appreciate you honoring him. I'm having, I brought my laptop to do this meeting and it will not connect, it's being really strange, so I'll be seeing Ellie when I return, I'm zooming from my phone, that's why it's awkward. I don't have a report yet for C4, and in fact, Mayor, I'm not going to be able to attend as I will be on a plane at that point, and so I'm hoping you can attend, if not, we'll watch it back. And traffic safety is next week, so I don't have much of a report, other than I will be returning to town, weather willing, tomorrow night. I'm, DC's expecting an ice storm tonight, so we'll see.
Okay, well, travel safely, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, Park and Rec will be meeting in a couple of weeks, so they have not had a meeting. Just a few things that I know that they're going to talk about is possibly recommending a bench in a tree in honor and memory of Jeff Snyder, which I think would be outstanding since we just adopted that, that ordinance. They're going to be working on prioritizing the capital improvement projects with Jerry, with recommendations for Jerry moving forward in the budget process. Some of those things too, that, that they're going to be talking about is the parking lot at Maple Street, the additional parking lot, which council is aware of, and then looking at the playground equipment and the walking path around, seeing how much can be done out of next year's budget in regards to those projects. Some of them can be looked at as falling into the Parkmaster Plan, but that's going to be up to Jerry and, and for the committee to, to look at. The request was made for the park maintenance fee, tracking, accurate tracking of the park maintenance fee on accounts payable, and I've talked to the city administrator about that, and so, and along with that, trying to hold that work session on the, with the Park and Rec Committee that the mayor mentioned earlier in regards to the park maintenance fee, because that's going to be up in front of the council here in a couple of years, I imagine, where we're going to have to revisit that, but I think too, we have to have a better understanding of how, how and what is being charged to the park maintenance fee and see if the council agrees with that. So that's why we need to have a work session with that. Adult Center, everything's moving along real well. Thank you, Eileen, for getting the check sent to Kathy over at the Adult Center, I saw the emails on that, so Kathy's happy that the check is in, in the mail.
It's been delivered, it's beyond in the mail, yes.
So thank you for doing that. Just a question, I don't know if Chief Trow would know this, but do we know when the emergency management training is yet for the city council?
No, yeah.
Okay, thanks. And then status of the Walnut Street extension? Do we have an update on that?
I will have more of an accurate schedule for the, if you can.
I asked for an update tonight, and our engineer was out in the field in the cold, he said, and he wouldn't get it to us, but I'll have an update for Walnut Street for you, for the, for the city administrator for the next council meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, sir. Council Sterns?
Haven't really gone to any meetings since the last council, I just wanted to reiterate something that the police chief said in a memo to us earlier, just due to the things in national headlines and the current situation that Canby Police does not enforce immigration, and that people can call the police and it doesn't matter what their immigration status is. I think this is really important because talking to people in the community around the area, I talk to people all the time who are afraid to call the police, sometimes they get their paychecks held hostage, and I've seen abusive relationships where the abuser will threaten them with calling the police about immigration status to keep them in an abusive situation, so I think it's just really, really important to, for everybody to know that they can call the police and they're not going to arrest you for immigration violations, just like they won't arrest you for tax violations either. So that's a federal law and that's not what the police here in Canby do, so I just want to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Council Sterns, appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I just wanted to compliment Chief Trow in regards to his email to us in explaining that circumstance, which I thought was very clear and precise and probably better than what I've seen from other cities.
No, I would agree. Thank you, Chief. Council Waterman?
I haven't been to any new meetings since the last city council. The next Bike and Ped meeting that is scheduled for February 11th is not going to occur. At that same time, the Comprehensive Plan Project Advisory Committee will be meeting here. here at the same time. So the Park and Rec meeting will be rescheduled for March. Library meeting is still scheduled for their, their original time later this month. Today, I also, I attended the Elected Essentials training for, through the League of Organized Cities down in Salem, from eight to, eight in the morning till five a.m., or five p.m. It was a, it was a very important and very good training. It was interesting, because it wasn't just city councilors that were there, there was mayors and city administrators and city clerks, all in the same room, going through the same training, sharing perspectives and, and ideas and, and how, how they do things, and I thought that was, that was very interesting and very well worth it. And, something else I was going to mention about, oh, the, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought on, on that training. So, yeah, so that, that training occurred, and it was very helpful. Oh, that's the other thing I would say, it wasn't just for newly elected officials, so there was people that have been serving for 20 years up through, just newly elected, so again, it wasn't just for people just coming in, refreshers and, and anything in between, so it was a good to hear perspective from experience as well, from other people there.
Great.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move over to our city administrator for her report and updates.
Counselor, I have a few things. First of all, thank you again for Friday night and setting the goals of the city for yet another fiscal year. I am, you know, as the mayor said, I, I will convene the leadership team, and we will refine the product that we received from Ashley today and go through that. I did want to comment on one addition that I'm going to make to the reporting out of even the fiscal year '24, '25 goals, and that is adding, on the first meeting of the month, I will have a monthly goal update. So I will be reporting on our council goals on a monthly basis at the first meeting of the month. So that, in addition to all the other reporting disciplines that we've put in place, having a quarterly update, having the goals listed on staff reports, and having the goals mentioned in the bi-monthly reports, that hopefully I'm reporting and, you know, out enough on that. So that will be a new addition that you will see in the March agenda.
Great.
It will be fiscal year '24, '25, so it will be the current goals that you will see in March.
Okay.
And then when July rolls around, we'll, we'll flip to the, to the '25, '26 goals.
Good, great.
Also, there is a Comp Plan Project Advisory Committee meeting, I, Jamie sent you information about that tonight, that will be next Tuesday from February 11th, starting at 6:00 p.m., so there was some interest at goal-setting session about when that Comp Plan meeting was. And then I also wanted to report on the Emergency Operations Plan that Chief Trow is organizing. He's attending a regional Cascadia Earthquake Tabletop Workshop Series on February 25th, so he and I think some others will be attending that.
Public Works and...
Okay, that's right. And then he will be, bring back that information and design the next tabletop, table exercise, tabletop exercise for us here in Canby around the Cascadia earthquake scenario, so that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Next opportunity for citizen input, looking at our two citizens, none, okay. Action review.
You have approved the consent agenda, the noise variance for J.E. Dunn, the release of sewer easement letter for 1075 Southeast First Avenue, adopted ordinance 1639, and scheduled an audit presentation and mid-year budget review on February 26th.
Great, thank you very much. There's nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn this evening. So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay. We finished too early. Under an hour is insane.
Any abstentions?
It's ridiculous.
So, we are adjourned. Goodnight, Canby.